The Northborough Select Board meeting, I will call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. We don't have any introductory script because we are all here in person. So that's that. With first item on our agenda as always is public comment. If there is anyone in the audience, whether that be... Hold on a second. Owen, I think you need to start the webinar.
You want me to do that?
Okay. I'm not... Okay. All right. We've got to make sure that any members of the public that want to see... Owen, is there anything I need to do to start the recording?
That's it. You're all set.
Okay. Great. Okay. Let me make sure I have the participants' window up. Attendees... Okay. So again, public comment. If there's anyone in the audience, whether in person or remote, wishes to speak to anything, primarily something that's not on our agenda tonight, raise your either physical or electronic hand and I'll be more than happy to recognize you. Give it a moment.
Can I hear you? If they're on the webinar?
I don't know. I've got a question for Owen. We are muted on the Zoom. Should I unmute that?
Yes.
Okay.
End video.
End the video. Ah, okay. All you said was here, you can do everything with the mouse. There we go. So I will say that again. Welcome. We've just called our meeting to order, dealing with some technical issues. First item on our agenda is public comment. If there is anyone in the audience, in person or remote, that wishes to speak to anything, primarily something not on our agenda, now would be a good time. You can raise your physical or electronic hands and I'll be happy to recognize you. Watching the screen to see if anyone remotely presses anything and I do not see anything. Going once, going twice. All right. I will declare public comment closed. We will, of course, have another public comment at the end of our meeting. Approval of minutes. We've got two sets. Did you have something?
Yeah. I wonder if we can move that to the next item because we've got such a large audience.
Sure. Of course. I think that's reasonable. I'm going to make note on that on the agenda so that I don't forget.
They didn't come to watch us approve the minutes?
Who is going to read every word in the meeting minutes this time? No, only kidding. All right. Police Department Promotions. Tim, do you want to kick us off on this?
It's great that you have a huge contingent from the Police Department here. It's awesome. So you have two. You have one lieutenant promotion from sergeant and then a patrolman to sergeant, which the chief will speak to that one and I'll speak to the promotion of lieutenant. As you know, the department has a number of policies that it follows. One of them is regarding hiring and we had a committee. Kristen sat on the committee with two other area police chiefs to go through three candidates and then I interviewed instead of the chief due to the nature of the relationship with one of the applicants. After reviewing both the scores from the committee, the interview process, and the length of service, I'm recommending to the board to appoint William Griffin as lieutenant. I'll entertain any questions you might have.
Any questions from the board? All right.
It was not an easy process to go through, given the fact that they're related was tough, but we got through it. We did the right thing. We complied with everything that everybody from the outside world told us to do. Great candidates overall and I think I'm going to give you a good lieutenant.
And at our last meeting, we, of course, approved a disclosure statement that the chief submitted to us and... Which was the appropriate thing to do, so this is not new to not just anybody, but anyone in the town is aware that this was... He was at least an applicant and I think an excellent applicant. So with that, questions?
Is now the right time to commend our police for saving the city in Massachusetts?
They'll take that anytime.
Quite an accomplishment. Thank you.
And I also want to say that I... For the three men who are looking to get into their higher positions, I want to thank. I think we have great choices. I'm really happy with the choices that we've made and keep it up, guys. We have a great team here. Looking forward to working with you for the next couple of years.
I know the chief might speak to this, but the fact that the board supported the budget process and the positions, it's not such a flat organization. People have career advancement opportunities now. You'll probably talk about that, so I'm sorry. But I just need to acknowledge the board's work to support that, so we appreciate that.
Okay. Do we want to ask the lieutenant candidate to stand or come forward for the motion that we're going to raise?
I think that should happen, huh? You can introduce yourself to the crowd.
Thank you.
William Griffin.
Well, good to see you.
Thank you.
Congratulations on the motion that we're about to make.
Appreciate it.
And it's great to see that...
Thank you.
I trust a number of these are your family.
Yes.
A couple of whom I know, many I don't. But it's great that they were able to join. I know there will be another ceremony at the police station at some point in the very near future.
Correct.
And looking forward to that as well. I don't think there's anything else we need to do unless anyone has any particular questions or comments. We need to make a motion.
I'd like to make that motion.
Please do.
Chairman, I move the board to vote to appoint Detective Sergeant William Griffin as Police Lieutenant effective May 7th, 2024, as recommended by the town administrator.
Second.
Made by Laura, seconded by everybody. I'll give it to Kristen. I'm going to give as many motions and seconds to Kristen tonight as I can. And any discussion?
I just think it's great.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Thank you. And with that, we need to vote. Yes, and we don't even have to do a roll call vote because we're all here. All in favor, raise your hands. I see that as a unanimous vote. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Lieutenant?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. And chief, your turn.
Thank you very much. Brian Griffin, Chief of Police. And as Tim McInerney said, I do want to thank all of you for your support on this process. Kristen helped us and Tim helped us and also my request back in January about adding a second lieutenant, which will be for you... Will be before you in a couple of weeks. So it's an exciting time, any time we can promote people. You know, in a smaller town, it doesn't happen all the time. And as Tim said, advancement's a great thing. And we started this process back in January, soon after I took over as chief. We have to advertise internally for the positions of both lieutenant and sergeant and that's what we did. So for the sergeant process, it's a little different than the lieutenant process. The sergeant process entails... It's in our policy. It entails a testing process and an assessment center. And we use an outside vendor who comes in to administer the test and runs the assessment center. And with the assessment center... Let me rewind one step. The process with the exam, a few candidates, all great individuals, all great police officers took the test. There's a test score. They then advance to the next step, which is the assessment center. It's held a week after the test and they're put through all different exercises. It's a whole day-long process and it was conducted with three outside police chiefs who came in and did the assessment. So they come up with a score based on their exam score and the assessment center score and that's how we create our list for the sergeants. So I'm very excited to introduce the next sergeant, if he's approved tonight. And I'd like Sean Monville to sit next to me, if that's okay?
It is.
And Sean said to speak quick because his little daughter is hungry, so... But it is nice that we are in person for these and that we're able to invite family and fellow officers here. As Mitch said, we are going to have a more formal swearing-in and pinning, which is customary in the police work. So we'll be sure to extend that invitation to the select board and if you're available, that would be great. So that'll probably be in late June and at that time, we hope to have that second lieutenant too. So it'll be three different people who have the pinning. So that'll be exciting. So Sean put in for the process and came out on top on all... On those categories that I just spoke about. Sean is a graduate of Providence College. He started his law enforcement career in 2015, working for the Assumption University Police Department. Great school, by the way. I may have gone there. He was hired by the Northborough Police in 2016. So this is not Sean's first time around this process and as my memo to you, Sean was before the select board and was promoted to sergeant back in 2022. And then he thought he would go to this other agency because the grass was greener, he thought. But we were happy that it just wasn't the right fit for him. And a couple of days after trying out that agency, he decided Northborough was the best fit for him. And we were so happy at the time to receive that phone call, you know, asking if we would hire him back. And without hesitation, he was hired back. We thought that highly of him and still do. But Sean came back as a patrolman because he retired, resigned. So he had to go through this process twice in two years and he remained humble. I think it was difficult at times, you know, now having people who, you know, less... He was less senior to them and he wasn't a sergeant anymore. And that's a tough thing, a tough pill to swallow. But he stayed humble. He worked hard, harder than ever. He studied and he's a real smart young man and he once again came out on top. And I'm so happy for him and his family that we get to put the stripes back on him and that's what they deserve. So without further ado, I'm asking that the board consider Sean Monville as Police Sergeant.
Any questions or comments from the board? Say, welcome, welcome back and I'm excited about the motion we're about to make.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to appoint Sean Monville as Police Sergeant effective May 7th, 2024, as recommended by the Police Chief.
Second.
Motion made by Julianne, second. I'll give you... All right. I'll give this one to Kristen also. This is Kristen's last meeting, so that's why I'm giving her a lot of extra work or a little extra credit. Any questions or comments before we vote from the board? Any questions or comments from you?
Just want to thank you again. I want to thank the chief. I want to thank my family, my coworkers. It'd be beside myself to say that I wouldn't be up here without the support that my wife had given me, allowing me to study as hard as I did. I know at times it was annoying and she was wondering where I was all the time and, you know, sitting in the library for hours, it did pay off. I wouldn't be sitting here had I not had her support, so I just wanted to recognize her and all that she did for our family while I was doing this. And again, I'm very excited to step into this position again. I look forward to leading this department. We have a bunch of great guys, both experienced and new officers here, and I think that we are on a great path. And just as the chief had said, I want to recognize the board for what they've done for this department as well. We wouldn't be in the step forward that we are without you guys, so thank you for all your support and again, I look forward to serving this town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I should make the comment when we don't make the comment or say anything, it's not because we're not happy. We're all very happy with you coming back and with you getting your achievements and getting a department that's going to be a well-oiled machine.
I hope so.
Thank you.
Hearing no other comments. Ready for vote?
Ready.
All those in favor? Excellent. Congratulations. I see that as unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How old is the baby?
Six months.
Congratulations.
Oh, excellent. Congratulations, Sergeant.
Thank you so much.
Welcome back.
Wait. We have very exciting things, but I appreciate that you may want to celebrate with your family.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming today. We'll take a brief one-minute recess.
There's the baby. Bye, baby.
Hard to follow that. We have meeting minutes of March 18th and then March 25th.
Okay. Can I just... That's not my Yeti cup, is it, Laura?
I actually don't think so.
It's yours.
It's mine.
Okay. I don't know where mine is. I thought I might have left it on that desk by mistake. Sorry.
I thought you were joking.
Okay.
I thought this was like the last meeting thing.
No.
The things that couldn't happen with a remote meeting.
No, right. My cup's always right here. I move the board vote to approve the March 18th, 2024 meeting minutes as presented or amended. Did we have amendments?
That was suggested in case there are amendments.
Yes, I think...
I've got some comments.
Okay.
So I found that in the minutes around Health and Human Services, it talked a lot about my comments about the grant impact of it. I think I had some other comments, but I didn't have an opportunity to go back and watch the meeting.
Will we just skip them?
Is it possible to pass over?
Absolutely.
Skip it.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay. You made that motion, right? All right. So you withdraw the motion?
I withdraw that motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. Totally fine. Are we ready to proceed on the March 25th meeting minutes? Anybody have any concerns with those?
Just double-check on that one.
Do you want me to make a motion?
I just want to look for a minute.
Oh, wait a second.
This is the one that went until 11:30. I'm surprised it's only eight pages. Are we... Lisa, are you still looking? I don't have any problem holding them if we want to. We just shouldn't wait too, too long.
I would say, if you wouldn't mind, we'll pass to next time.
Okay.
Sorry, Kristen, you're not going to... You've got to weigh in on your minutes. You can write in though.
All right. So we are skipping both sets of meeting minutes. I will ask board members that when meeting minutes go out to, you know, get comments into the office as quickly as possible if we have suggestions. And maybe if the meeting minutes are done earlier than the packet, send them out a little bit earlier for people to take a look.
Yep.
Just to move it along.
Thank you.
Sure.
And I did ask today about what would happen about changing some things.
Mm-hmm.
And was told that we have to decide on the amendments to have them changed. Is that true?
If we make the changes at the meeting, then we have to... I mean, it has to be either an amendment to a motion or just move to approve as amended.
Okay.
So we all are in agreement that if they are comments particularly related to something that you said, I think it's probable that whoever is... I think it's Angie that does the meeting minutes now.
Linda.
Linda.
Yep.
Will, you know, as long as Linda agrees that that's consistent, then it just gets in there and we get a new version of it. And then that would just be a straight approval.
Do you get it in advance? We get it in advance, though. Like if we make a change, you get it in advance before it gets printed and then...
I get it... I get everything the same time everybody else does.
So that's at the meeting then?
Well...
No, it's in your packet, so Friday.
Oh, Friday. Yeah, yeah.
You had it Friday.
Yeah, it's in the packet.
I guess the question was like if the comment that we want to update is our own.
Yeah.
We do that just in an email to the town?
I would suggest...
And if it's a public, like if there's something else?
No, I would suggest in any case, if you have suggested corrections or adjustments to meeting minutes, let the office know as quickly as possible so that a new version could be generated for consideration at the meeting that we all have a chance to see.
Okay.
Sound reasonable?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next up, we have Wegmans to consider a one-day special liquor license for multiple dates for premises located at 9102 Shops Way. Well, thank you for coming in person.
Thank you for having us.
Why don't you introduce yourselves and let us know what... I mean, we see in the packet what it is you're looking to do, but give us a quick run-through.
Yeah, absolutely. My name is Tyler Hensler. I'm an attorney in Boston for Upton, Canal, and Devlin. With me is Alicia Elliott from Wegmans Supermarket. Again, we're here to request five one-day licenses for a beer tasting series that they're doing here in Northborough. The events will take place on five separate days between the hours of 5:00 and 8:00 PM. Dates are May 17th, June 21st, July 19th, August 16th, and September 13th. These are all Fridays. The event will have two beer tasting stations and one wine tasting station, lawn games, cornhole and the ladder game, which I am really bad at. Some live music as well. I'll have to go and get some practice, I guess. The event will take place on the outdoor patio. I don't know if you're familiar with the property, but between the cafe entrance and the main entrance, there's a pretty sizable patio. There will be a section for beer service... Oh, sorry. That will be enclosed with stanchions and there will be a section for beer service and the only entrance will be staffed by Wegmans employees. They will check IDs. Anyone who's over 21 will receive a wristband and each person with a wristband will be given no more than eight tickets, which are redeemable at the two beer service stations manned by trained staff provided by the suppliers for a two-ounce pour. So eight times two. I'm a lawyer. I'm not very good at math, but that's 16 ounces. That's just a pint of beer. So, you know, they're very responsible. These, of course, are provided free of charge. There's also non-alcoholic options for people who don't drink alcohol but still want to hang out and, you know, enjoy. There will be seven breweries at each event. There might be a few repeats, but for the most part, there will be seven unique breweries at each tasting that include Jack's Abbey, Allegash, Warmtown Brewery, all the good ones and all generally pretty local. And with that, we're happy to take any questions. We've done this in past years. I don't know how many past years, but...
Last year was our first year.
Yeah. I remember going through the process last year.
We're back. It was very successful, so happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Welcome. I am glad that that worked out to be a good event. What was attendance like last year? How... Because I know it was kind of a rainy summer.
So, yeah, that's a great question. We had... It was mixed, up and down. Some weeks we had like 35, 36 people. One week, over the course of the three hours, we had about 56 people. So 56 was our largest attendance last year.
And did you have the games last year or is that a new...
We had them available for folks to use and we was kind of tight in the area, so this year we are actually trying to expand it to make a, you know, make more room for the games.
And then my last question is...
Absolutely.
I like the music piece. We brought a lot of local musicians in town. Is there a process if they wanted to... Like is there a process for them if they wanted to possibly be considered for one of your performances?
Sure. I'm actually the one who has been hiring all of the musicians, so I found them through local pubs, bars, breweries that I've talked to and they've given me names. If they're interested, they can... I can leave my card.
That would be great.
And they can reach out to me.
We have some excellent open-mic nights here in Northborough where I'm sure you could find some good talent. I go to a lot of them, so I may be able to tell you when they are. The First Parish Church has it on the first Friday of every month. Trinity Church has it on the third Friday of every month, but they're done for the summer. I might be able to find some videos online. And the American Legion has them most Wednesdays.
That's great.
So you'll find some really, really good musicians.
Yeah, we've been pretty lucky to find them. You know, word of mouth too has been great. Like one musician will play and he'll tell... I'll ask because maybe I couldn't get someone or something for the store, so not available. But yeah, that's fantastic to know. Thank you.
Great.
And I just... I'm assuming you're doing this so that you'll bring more people into your little area that you sell beer and wine and that sort of thing? I mean, is it a promotion to get people more motivated to come in and come to Wegmans and make it there?
Yes. To understand what we offer for beer, we want folks to know that we have a lot of local breweries. The wine that, you know, some of the wines we offer as well as non-alcoholic, so it does help customers come in and get to know us a little bit because it's the people that are managing the outside are the people that work in the store. So just to get to know us and invite them in and enjoy an event on a Friday evening in the summer.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I do love that you're going to have some non-alcoholic options too. I like that inclusivity, so...
We, yeah, we do non-alcoholic at every event we do, especially today's day and age. Everybody really is... Non-alcoholic is an upward trend, so we like to make sure that folks have that available.
Awesome. Thank you.
I don't see any letter in here from the Police Department, so since the Police Chief happens to be behind, any concerns?
I've reviewed the packet. We have no concerns. We've worked with Wegmans. They're fantastic to work with. Some of the things we look for is to make sure there's separation between the outside people and the people who are in the event and they've addressed that. The servers are going to be tip-certified and we have no issues.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions?
I'm sorry.
Laura?
Were there any, like, any hiccups last year when you did it? Were there any problems or...
No.
Everybody was behaving properly?
Yeah, they behaved really well. In fact, most people, when they leave, they give us back tickets. They don't use them all. They just want to come and, you know, see what's happening and they see, hear music, so they...
Wander over.
Hang around a little bit and then they're like, okay, this is fun. Thank you.
Great. I look forward to it.
We didn't have any.
Makes grocery shopping fun.
So how are you advertising?
We put signs up within the store.
Oh, just within the store?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. And we... This year, we might, because we have time, put it on our events page online at Wegmans.com for the Northborough store. So we... Under Wegmans.com, there's an events page and it says whatever if we're doing events and we could put it there as well. So those are the only two ways we really advertise.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you for doing it.
Yeah, you're welcome. It's fun.
Hearing no other questions. Hearing no other questions. This isn't a public hearing, but as always, if anyone in the electronic audience has any comments or questions, raise your electronic hands. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve the application for a one-day special license as submitted by Wegmans for events to be held at 9102 Shopsway per the approved floor plan as submitted with the application for the following dates: May 17th, June 21st, July 19th, August 16th, and September 13th with the following conditions. The license shall include the 24-hour period immediately before and after each event in order to allow for the proper delivery and disposal of all alcoholic beverages. Guests shall have identification on their person, and those who are 21 years or older will be given wristbands. Proper signage posted and approved barriers installed notifying guests that alcohol must be contained in the designated areas only. Satisfactory inspections shall be performed prior to the start of the first event by the Fire, Building and Health Departments.
Second.
Thank you.
Is there a second? Oh, Julianne's second. I missed that. Motion made by Laura, seconded by Julianne. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Here's unanimous. I'm going to call a 30-second break, because I want to ask Owen a question.
Thank you.
Yep. Perfect. Thank you. I was alerted that the YouTube livestream hadn't started. We're being recorded, but it wasn't going on YouTube. I think that's getting set up right now. So, I apologize for people, well, people who aren't watching us are not able to watch us.
Why don't somebody let us know?
The Zoom is, the Zoom is working, and it's being recorded, so it will go to YouTube, but the livestream wasn't there. So, hopefully, that's going to get sorted out. Why don't we continue along? Next up, a somewhat similar request, Tugus Family Farm, to consider a one-day special liquor license for multiple dates for premises located at 234 Ball Street. Hi there.
Welcome.
Hi. Thanks for having me.
Sure. Why don't you introduce yourself, and we have the information from the packet, but give us a quick overview.
All right. My name is Carrie Ward. I'm one of the managers at Tugus Family Farm. Similar to last year, we're requesting a series of special day permits to serve beer and wine for various weekends throughout the season. It's slightly different from last year. We ran to some hiccups with all the, fortunately inclement weather that we had, so we did try to expand the space a little bit just to accommodate rain, really, and having more space for that. What else do you need from me?
Questions or comments from the board?
I'm sorry the weather didn't work out last year.
It's okay. It's always something.
Did you still get people that were able to make it?
We did. It was just, it pretty much rained like one out of every weekend day, so, you know, we got one day out of it, but it was a good. We also lost our cherry and peach crop last year, so it was a good way to have, draw people up to the farm anyway by having some special events. So, similar to last year, we also had that cold snap a couple of weeks ago. We didn't, like, lose crops entirely, but we're still kind of waiting to see. So, we are trying to find ways to diversify. We've been doing, like, extended ice cream hours. We're doing a Mother's Day event. So, just trying to find more reasons to bring people up to the farm and expand the offerings that we have for our guests.
I'm grateful to have the farm, so I hope that we can help support-
Yeah.
And diversifying. Sorry, I meant to interrupt you.
No, I was just going to ask, you used to use your, some of the fruits and stuff to help with making different beers. Are you still doing that?
Yes. So, last year, we did work with Stone Cow for all of our split blueberries that we're splitting. We gave those to them, and we probably will work with them again. We've also have some other breweries have reached out. So, it's a really good way when we come, we have, like, extra fruit or things we need to use, and we also are hoping to, I know those mentioned, like, the non-alcoholic beverages, do, like, Tugus fruit, like, refreshers or something, so use our fruit in some kind of, like, non-alcoholic refreshing drink.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's great.
I can't wait to try them. I was just going to ask if there were any, were there any challenges last year, any, like, problems from the event?
No, I mean, it was pretty, you know, we didn't really have any, too many, there was, like, one day that was, like, really busy, but we were able to have, like, extra staff come on that day, but everything ran smooth. I mean, we had certain, since it was our first year with our insurance company, they also were requiring us to really be diligent about keeping track of, like, how many people we were serving to make sure, you know, our assurance, we had the right policies and stuff. So, you know, I think we had a good system with, like, wristbands and having an account every day, making sure we had, I mean, just like the town, they want to have, like, all the signs and keep things designated to a certain area. Had a lot of tips staff on hand. I tried to just have, like, everybody get it that was working in food service, so we weren't limited, or if I needed an extra person to be aware, help monitor and stuff.
And will you two be having music as well?
Not, we don't have anything planned right now. We did add some speaker systems around the farm and of working with, there's, like, a serious business, like Neptune Radio was actually like a specific agricultural, it's kind of like farmy music that you can subscribe to, so we're doing that. And then we might, you know, add music here and there. Last year, I ended up having the music we had with some of my employees that I found out were in bands, so they got to play.
That's great. Did you find when you had it last year that there was, there was a good uptick of people coming in?
Yeah. I mean, we had, without the cherries or peaches, we just had a really long July, like, long blueberry season and into August. So, we had, like, the Donut Days of Summer, which is kind of like an event we made up, and we had, it was like the last hurrah before school, kind of went back, and so we're probably going to do that again. So, we were able to be creative with some ideas. A lot of ice cream Sundays. I already looked up National Ice Cream Day, Sunday, we're going to do a Sunday Fun Day.
I've seen some of the polls you've been doing, which flavors are going to win.
Yeah, I know. We have a-
Neck and neck for some options.
We have a new, a new team member who's, like, really helping us kind of get our act together with some things, so it's great.
You generally do a beautiful job.
Yes.
Well, thank you.
And even with traffic and all of that, it's-
Well, thanks. Yeah, we're looking forward to, hopefully, the weather cooperates for Sunday for Mother's Day, because we're doing, like, a little picnic package. I think right now, we have almost, like, 100 groups almost signed up, so I'm like, okay, I'll start baking.
Similar to the last application, I'd love it if the police department could let us know if there are any concerns.
Carrie and the two, again, like Wegmans, they're great to work with. I went up there personally a couple of weeks ago to review their permit originally. They offered some suggestions. They took our suggestions, and we haven't had any issues up there, and I have no issues.
Great. Okay, thank you. Unless there are any other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move the board vote to approve the application for a one-day special license as submitted by Tugus Family Farm LLC for events to be held at 234 Ball Street per the approved floor plans as submitted with the application for the following dates: June 15th and 16th. Do I read the rain dates?
I know. It's a lot of them.
I'll just read them, because you guys are going to miss me. So, rain date, June 19th and 20th, June 22nd and 23rd, rain date, July 20th and 21st, June 29th and 30th, rain date, July 27 and 28, July 6th and 7th, rain date, August 3rd and 4th, July 13th and 14th, rain date, August 17th and 18th, and also for the following dates with no rain date, August 31st, September 1st and 2nd, September 7th and 8th, September 14th and 15th, September 21st and 22nd, September 28th and 29th, October 5th and 6th, October 12th, 13th and 14th, October 19th and 20th, and October 26th and 27th.
Second.
Wait a minute. You have to read more.
Do I read that part, too?
Okay.
Pause that. The license shall include the 24-hour period immediately before and after each event in order to allow for the proper delivery and disposal of all alcoholic beverages. Guests shall have identification on their person, and those who are 21 years or older will be given wristbands. Proper signage posted and approved barriers installed notifying guests that alcohol must be contained in the designated area only. Satisfactory inspections shall be performed prior to the start of the first event by the Fire, Building and Health Departments.
Second.
I had a question for either of you. I guess, when do a collection of one-day liquor licenses become a necessity to just get a liquor license?
They're allowed 30 per year.
Ah.
31 days per year.
I figured there was a rule, and you do it, so thank you.
Yes, because we, it was a whole, we were trying to apply for our general premise license this year, and for a series of reasons, we were just kind of came up to the line where we didn't think we were going to do it in time. So, we took out, like, the max amount of days, and I did talk to Linda, because I know she had to go back and forth with her contacts from the ABCC about the rain dates and stuff like that. So, we're hoping with this, after the last one is done, to submit our actual license and go through that process.
Good question. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
And do we have one available?
Yes. No, we have a quota, but we do, we have several available.
Several left for that.
Liquor licenses.
So, when you say, sorry, just a point of clarification, we have several licenses available for these temporary events, or if they wanted to have a permanent license?
Well, we have licenses available that are for beer and wine.
Yes.
And it would be considered a general on premise.
Okay. I didn't realize we had any more left, because I thought that there was only one after the White Cottage application last year.
I can double-check that.
I could be, I mean-
There's lots of different kinds.
I think theirs was like a retail.
Okay.
The White Cottage was like a gift.
Yeah, that's a retail. This is a pouring license. This would be a pouring license.
There's lots of different kinds of liquor licenses.
I've done a lot of, um, on that ABC website after going through all this.
Hey, well, check that out.
And when you've learned it, come back and give us a question.
Yeah, I know. It was me and Linda. I mean, she was great. It was like, kind of going back and forth. And then I was talking to other farms, too, that just went through the process, knowing, like, some of the things they came up with, with the ABCs, like, so hopefully, we're good when that comes to that point.
Great. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, say.
Hi.
I see that as a unanimous vote. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. If you're ever at the farm, make sure you say hi.
Yeah, sure.
I'll have to come and visit this summer.
All right. Have a great, see you later.
Thank you for joining us. Quick question. Does anyone mind if I turn off the air conditioner?
Please do.
That would be nice. Yeah, it's chilly in here.
But I appreciate it.
Look at all the people in the audience.
Hi, Jack.
And do you have something to say this evening, sir?
It's not a public comment yet.
Oh, you have to wait.
But you can raise your hand at any time. All right, moving right along. Vote to authorize the chair of the select board to sign the documents related to exercising the right of first refusal for the 432 Whitney Street property, including but not limited to a purchase and sale agreement for the property. So, at town meeting, town formally approved exercising essentially the funding for the exercising the right of first refusal, so I'm sure there are some blanks that you could fill in, but now it's our job.
By the 20th of May, the PNS needs to be signed, which will, in effect, be the first right of refusal exercising your first right to purchase this property out of 48 Chapterland. We've been working with Katie Klein at KMP on this document. I think the board knows that the terms and conditions have to be the same as the private seller's terms and conditions. We did walk the site on May 1st, just because, you know, people had concerns about what may or may not be dumped there, and some of the trees are mature along the road, so I can only go in so far. We had a couple of staff, and then the gentleman who owns the parcel came out with us as well, and upon leaving, he told me he would clean up some of the, some of the debris that was on the site and some of the trash. We actually inserted that language in the PNS as well, so we hope he'll comply. He offered it willingly, so we'll see what happens with that. But again, the document you have in your packet is not the final document. It's just for the chair to sign, so when we get close to the 20th, you won't have to scramble to have a meeting to execute that. And then sometime after that signature, within 90 days, we'll go to close. I will on the, by the 20th, when the chair signs, we'll have to give them a check for $50,000 as a bona fide offer. And then we'll continue. We've already done all the title work. It's clear. We know where all the easements are. We know what the boundaries are, but we still have that time for due diligence after we exercise and sign the PNS. And we'll close in person. It's to our leisure, if you will, where we close. If we do it electronically, but I would prefer to be at the registry of deeds to close at the physical place where that deed will be recorded.
Sounds good. Lisa?
So, I was reading it and wondering what we do with the tax difference since December, I believe. He took off the farms, the farm standing for the tax relief, and that he owes, he owes the difference from when he first put it on until now.
He's current to date with his taxes?
Not, not his regular taxes, but the differential between the farm percentage and what the regular would be. That was around $90,000 or something, $92,000?
That's the other parcel across the street.
No.
Yep. This parcel is not, it's up to date with taxes in terms of its payment. 429 is not.
But I, but I understood that he paid his regular taxes at the farm rate. That's paid up. When you buy, when you buy, once, once it becomes something to the town, like the town is purchasing it-
Yep.
Those periods, those years that he got the discount gets paid back.
The rollback, the rollback tax is what it's called, so that'll be trued up at the closing. So, he'll have to get a municipal lien certificate before we go to close, so everything that's owed to us will be paid prior to. But it's not, I just don't want it to be confusion about the other side of the street is in tax title, and that's his parcel, but I can't connect it to this parcel.
Right.
His taxes are current now on this parcel and will be before we close, and that'll be certified by the treasurer collector by a municipal lien certificate upon closing.
All right. So, you're calling the other thing the rollback taxes?
Yeah, that's, I think that's the official terminology for the rollback.
Okay. That isn't mentioned in the PNS. How does that get legally expected?
They're just their taxes. Whatever, whatever that municipal lien certificate has to be, to be satisfied, to be released, it has to be. If it's not, then we don't close. So, we have to have the full payment. I don't know what the rollback tax is between what he, what he's current now on and what he'll owe on the day of closing. They'll, they'll do the math when that municipal lien certificate is requested.
Okay. And then when they do, and when they do that as well, he's got the first quarter that's due. I assume that was paid May 1st. And then there's, there's a, there's one month, probably.
Yeah, there'll be 20, there could be 20, 90, it'd be 110 days potentially between May 1st and the date we close, and it'll have to be current. Again, the MLC will clear his, prove to us that he's paid his taxes in full, and then we can close.
Okay. Let me see. There's a couple of the questions I have.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
I don't, I'm not quite clear on this rollback tax. It's-
He paid, when you were in Chapterland-
Yeah.
You had one valuation, and then if you can use it as commercial, it's a higher valuation. So, when he, when he asked to pull it out, there'll be a difference from whatever ti, date that was, I don't know what it is, to the date we close, and it'll have to true up from that old value to the new value.
But in this case, it's not a lot of time.
No, it's, it's whatever the time was from when he first went in to the time-
Right.
That it comes out.
Okay.
So, I don't, I mean, I can get that separate apart from this. I don't know the exact, I had to talk to the assessor and the treasurer collector to get the exact. We're going to have that before we close.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just don't know the exact detail.
No, it wasn't the amount. I was, I just didn't understand the whole concept.
Well, it is, it's convoluted, but it's the difference in value from when it was chaptered to when it could be developed commercially.
Right. Okay, thank you.
And then this, again, the chair will not sign until council says-
Right. Yeah.
It's what the community wants to do.
Yeah, until, until council says this is ready to be signing, nobody signs it.
It's like you did with the PPA last week.
Yep. Laura? I'm sorry, Lisa, are you, are you all set?
Go ahead, Laura. I'm going to, I'm going to try to reframe my question next, so go ahead.
Thank you. No problem. So, what type of timelines are we looking at now? So, we'll sign the PNS on May 20th, and then what are the next steps?
90 days from then, we'll go to close.
And then how long does the closing take?
Well, what's 90 days after the 20th, so August 10th, maybe?
I just, I guess, were those the same timelines for, was it for Church Street when we sold that property? Was that 90 days, and is that completed?
No, that, we don't have the PNS signed for Church Street yet.
That'll, that'll be coming up probably in our next agenda.
Yeah, the 20th. I'm trying to get Church Street and 4 West Main for the dentist office to you for the 20th.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Give me a second.
Sure.
Comes and goes. I hear something, and it just blew right on my head. The title insurance makes sure that there's no clouds on the title, which means no other liens, no other areas.
Correct.
And have they done that due diligence already as well?
They've done the title search, and it's clean and clear title, so we can move forward. But again, you go right up into the closing, because if anything happens between now and then, we want to make sure it's free and clear of any liens or encumbrances.
All right. Does it, does the title just say the title's clean, or does it have any, any detail?
It's a lengthy document. It's a lengthy document with the easements spelled out for the railroad. All that kind of stuff is on that document. And I can, I thought I voted to the board, but I didn't. I can do that.
I'd like to, like to have that to look at, if you don't mind, because I am going to do a little research. There's one thing, there was a lien from the IRS, but I don't know where it was on, so. Okay.
Certainly, if any board member has any specific questions, you know, go through Tim to contact the assessors on, you know, whether it be for an understanding of the process or making sure the calculation makes sense from your perspective. Any other comments or questions? If not, I will entertain a motion. So, I think this one's yours.
It is? Oh, second page. Oh, second page. I didn't get two pages. I move the board to exercise its right of first refusal pursuant to Chapter 61A, Section 14, for the property located at 432 Whitney Street, for the purchase price of $1,700,000, and further, to vote to authorize the Chair of the Select Board to sign any and all documents necessary or convenient for said purpose, including but not limited to a purchase and sale agreement for the property.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Lisa, seconded. I'm going to give it to Kristen again. For that, any other comments or questions? Tim, I appreciate the lengthy technical walkthrough of what goes ahead with this. Obviously keep us informed. Hearing no other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wouldn't miss saying everybody's names. Okay.
It's a little faster.
Yeah, oh yeah. Select Board name change. So I asked, I put this on the agenda for a couple of reasons. So you may remember at last year's annual town meeting, the town approved changing the name from Board of Selectmen to Select Board, and sent, as a result of that, we sent something off to the state legislature. They approved, they actually passed a special law to enable this. And so the name change is official when that was approved in January, December, I forget exactly when it was, so over the winter. As part of that, we have all of our bylaws, which say Board of Selectmen, all over the place. So they gave us the authority in that same legislation to, instead of having to go back to town meeting and having a really, really long warrant article of this change and this change and this change and this change, they gave us the permission to go ahead and just change it in one swoop, one quick vote. So I wanted to do that after town meeting with the expectation that some bylaws might be changing at town meeting, which of course they did, so that hopefully it can be a simpler process from the town clerk's perspective to go ahead and make these changes at the same time. Andy knows this is coming, so this isn't a surprise to anybody, and the people that he works with for these things will, will be able to take care of that. The other reason is I wanted to make sure, since, you know, we did this with this particular organization of the board, was certainly, you know, even the new members were certainly a part of that, I wanted to make sure to do this before Kristen departed.
Thank you.
So that was, that was very important as far as the timing of this goes. So it's a simple process. Tim had the suggestion, which I think was a good one, to also change our policies at the same time. So our, so that's part of the suggested motion, is our policies also make mention of Board of Selectmen, and this would make the same change at the same time. And that we can do easily, that's, that doesn't require legislative approval.
And can we, can we add new policies while the doors open for this, or change policies that we have?
We can do that at any time. Yeah, we don't, we don't need anything special for that. That is something I would like to do. Now we're sort of, and we've got a town administrator and an assistant town administrator. I think we should have a clear policy book, and I don't even think we have a policy on how to adopt policies, which most towns have. I know that sounds kind of crazy, but it's a, it's actually a good process to have. So that's something that, you know, I, I hope we can do in the coming year, is formalize that process and take a look at, at gaps in policies, and policies we might want to update. All set? Okay, Laura?
Yeah, thank you. So I'm familiar with charter, familiar with bylaws. Is there a policies book? Where can I access that to see our policies?
So on the town website, the same part where you look at Town Code?
Yep.
It is the last, the last section of it. I don't remember what it's...
I don't remember seeing that before.
No, it's there. Hold on. If I can get my internet to work here.
Chapter nine?
Pardon?
Chapter nine?
In the charter, is chapter nine our policies?
Regulations and Policies, Part 11.
Okay.
Regulations and, well, let's see. Yeah, Part 11 and 12, Regulations and Policies is 11. Regulations and Policies of Committees and Commissions is 12. So somewhere within there, someplace.
And that's from the main town website?
That's in the same section as Town Code, so the same place we'd look for the charter and the bylaws. It's just a couple of those that are broken out there.
Thank you.
Sure. And those are policies that this board in years past have, have passed.
If it's not too much paper, could I possibly request a printout of that one? Would that be okay?
Oh, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Maybe two? Maybe two, and I can mark it up.
Yeah, no, I definitely think this board is past due for taking, taking a look at those, because many other towns have a, have a lengthier set of policies, and it's a more formal process to go through and make things changed. The school committee has a process that I have used before in another town, where you have to have like two or three readings of a policy before it becomes official. You can have an emergency bypass if you need to quickly change a policy. You know, Tim, you may have had experience with processes like that elsewhere. I think it would be good to formalize that and make sure everybody is aware of those. There may be some that just need to get updated and cleaned up in general also.
Okay, I look forward to it.
Okay, excellent. Policies are fun. Okay, any other comments or questions?
I have a comment about the Select Board thing, so I would just like to say that you keep giving me credit for it, but when I was running for this position, I had a meeting with Julianne Hirsch at her kitchen table, and she said, "Why are we still Board of Selectmen? All the other towns are changing to Select Board." And that was the first I had heard of it, really like that it was a thing to talk about. And all of a sudden, it became really important to me, too. But it never would have come across my mind if it wasn't that, for that passionate conversation with you.
Oh, thank you.
So I think Julianne should get the second on this one.
Okay.
Or vice versa, honestly. Anyway. "I move the board vote to amend the general bylaws and zoning bylaws of the town to revise all references to the Board of Selectmen and Selectmen to the Select Board and Select Board Members, and to further amend the Select Board policies of the town to revise all references to the Board of Selectmen and Selectmen to the Select Board and Select Board Members."
Second.
Excellent motions. Motions have been made and seconded. Any other comments or questions?
This is definitely...
Yeah, this is, this is, this is good. This is one of those things that could have and should have been a lot easier and happened a long time ago. Doesn't matter, it's happening now. And, and we got it done, and I, you know, certainly thanks to town meetings approval. Thank you to all three of our excellent legislators for ushering this through and getting that through the legislature and the governor for signing it. And I wish I could have gone to the signing and, you know, got the pen or something like that. But that's, this is, this is a simple thing, but a good thing. It's a really good thing. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I see that as unanimous. Thank you very much. Discussion regarding the recording of additional in-person meetings. So I put this on the agenda. We had a small number of meetings over the last couple of months that maybe, maybe they weren't traditionally taped or whatever it was, but part of it is also we have this great new equipment in here. We have this, in this room, which can completely self-record, and I think you, you did, did you do one in this room? And then downstairs, we all have a very similar piece of equipment down there that I think a design review, you had a meeting recorded. That looked, it sounded great.
Yes, yeah.
So was very happy about that. What's that?
Looked a little out of focus when I looked.
Yeah, it's tough for, for one camera to just get everything, so it's always going to be a little softer, and the microphones aren't, the audio isn't going to be just like there's a microphone in front of everyone. But, but it was very understandable. You could really follow the meeting, and it was very easy that one staff member just did whatever she did and, and made it happen.
Right.
So, so I thought it would be good for the board to have a discussion about, gee, now that we have this equipment in place, do we want to see the cable department presumably look for ways of recording more in-person meetings as committees come back to meeting in Town Hall? Traditionally, some meetings get recorded and some meetings don't. We, through the town administrator, you know, oversee the cable department, who put this great equipment in place and have the people that can do these things, and some, some don't even need the people, the cable department, to do, to do the work, because this equipment is easy to use. Are we interested in expanding that perhaps to more or even all in-person meetings to get recorded? And then if so, the suggestion that I would have would be to ask Tim to go ahead and then work with the cable department on how would, how would that actually work? To make sure that, is there any additional equipment that might be needed? Probably not, but maybe. Do they need additional personnel or staffing? Again, probably not, but maybe. And it might be a matter of looking at our, here are the committees that don't get recorded now, and how would they go about doing that? And then Tim would come back to us at a meeting in the very near future to go ahead and say, yeah, we're ready to go ahead, or we're ready to go ahead if we do X. Laura?
I love the idea. Thanks for suggesting it. My question is, from a staffing perspective, is that going to be feasible for our cable team?
You're in discussion about it? We haven't done any research at all. I mean, I've, I've talked to Dana, I think we can do it. It's just a matter of, it goes back to the policy. If the board wants to set a policy that all meetings that are public should be televised, and you give that directive, we'll find a way to get them televised or recorded. It might not go live, you don't have every channel, but you have YouTube that you can use.
Yep, and I greatly appreciate that, but I don't want to, you know, push us into a corner if it's going to negatively impact the cable team that are already...
We'll have to do some analysis, but again, it's, I think it's important for the boards that either you appoint or that are appointed by some other mechanism, that it's the executive board making the policy that all those boards and committees, regardless of who they're appointed by, are to be recorded, taped, and broadcast. For me, that's a bigger policy issue that the board should consider. We'll, we'll figure out the logistics of getting them on some recorded device.
I appreciate that.
So tonight, we would just say, we would like you to, and to get more information about how this could be done.
Yeah, based on what you talked about, can, can you do this, given our resources?
Yeah, or what, what will, what will it take to actually do it? And then Tim would, if we are interested in doing this, which I am seeing a lot of nodding, so I think we are, but I, I thought it was good, rather than send Tim off to do some work and Dana off to do some work that maybe we weren't that interested in, I wanted to make sure it came to the board first for that buy-in, and then Tim would come back to us with, with the results of that.
All right, I, I think we, we definitely should be doing that. I think we've had, there's some boards that don't get recorded that, one of the good things about that is that even as a liaison, we are Monday nights, of the meetings that happen on Monday nights, we can't go. So you don't get to be part of it, where you could at least have an overview, or that you could ask a question in advance, or find out some other things that are happening. So I think that all, all the meetings, you know, now that we have this, and it's much easier, that I think that that should be, you know, one of our first, first policies on deck, because just so many questions happen, and there's no way to go back and say what, what happened, and what did you discuss, and was there something special that, you know, we should have known about that we didn't? So, yeah, I'm, I'm, Tim is, Tim is doing a great job.
And I just wanted to add, when I was liaison to the Council on Aging, they weren't recording those meetings, and I don't know that they...
They still are not, yeah.
Yeah. And I feel like there's a lot of people who are interested in what they do, who maybe aren't as able to get out, especially at night and that kind of thing, so, and, and I know they meet usually at the senior center, but, so it might be another, you know, a little more complicated or whatever, but I really think, even if it's just with that example, that would make me say yes.
And they got a grant to buy essentially the same equipment, the TV with a camera gizmo up on top.
Is that called an owl?
That is not an owl. It's similar to an owl, but it's made by some other company.
Okay.
And they already have cameras down there? It's already set up?
In the big room, they have some great AV stuff. It's not linked in with Zoom or anything like that, but they, but they, they meet in a different room, but they, I don't know if they have it yet, or...
No, just sign the, sign the stuff.
They'll have it very soon, yeah.
So would it be put in the dull men's club room, or would it be in the, where would they actually?
The room that they meet in, it's like the meeting room.
It gets in the first conference room on the left, is where they normally meet, but I'm not sure which room it's going in.
They do like taxes there right now, right?
Yeah, well, it'll be on a rolling cart, so it will be, my, my assumption is it's going on a rolling cart, like, like this one and like the one downstairs here. That's usually how those are set up.
Okay.
So it could be used anywhere.
I just have two more quick things to chime in. I think in the spirit of helping people understand what's going on, I love this idea, because a lot of times people will call and ask, you know, about a project. It would be nice if I could point them to some of these recordings. The other comment is, I don't know what our policy is for retaining data, but if we're recording everything, it's going to grow our storage environment very quickly. So I don't know if there's going to be a cost associated with that as well, or what our retention policy is for these recorded videos, or...
I mean, they, they go on YouTube, so YouTube kind of magically takes care of that. I don't know if, yeah, I don't know if that, because these are, they are recorded by the cable department, so they are public records that need to be retained.
Yep.
I don't know the specifics as to whether the cable office needs to maintain the data on-site. That's a good, that's a good question. I don't know.
That'll be one of the things that we have to investigate.
I don't know if we can go back to meetings from, you know, I don't know how many years of meetings are on YouTube currently, and where they go afterwards.
I'm sure they're archived, I'm sure they're available.
Yeah, there's a service called archive.org, which is, the Internet Archive is what it's called, and some cable departments, including the town that I used to live in, put everything there also. You can go back there and look at really old meetings of me before beards and more hair and stuff like that, and they'll be there forever, there, because their intent is, the Internet Archive, they, they want to keep something forever, so that's a different type of an archive, but I think that's something I would love to see us take advantage of, too.
Do we have that now?
We don't do that now.
I know, because even with the minutes, there's only, so like, I think we've only got like seven years of minutes on the website right now, and I don't know where they go after that. I think you have to request through town clerk.
Just go to the town clerk, and they'll have to dig them out of a...
A box.
Iron mountain, unless they're scanned in there someplace.
Yeah, meeting minutes.
If they were scanned, they should be searchable by word search, because it'd be impossible to find anything.
Do we have, have we done digital archives for our old minutes?
You've done some with a project, you need to do a second phase, but you've done some, I don't know which documents have been, have been archived or scanned.
Great, thank you.
I'll add similar comments here that I think we should definitely do this. You know, record all meetings. It was a great surprise to me when I first started to get involved in town government here, that, this is obviously well pre-COVID, that there were so few committees being recorded. I think it is so interesting to the public and so important for the public to be able to see, and it's useful in a, a basic mechanical operations of government perspective, that sometimes, oh, what was that thing that so-and-so said three years ago when this thing first came up and we thought it was going to be unimportant, and it turns out three years later it's important? Let me go watch that again. And a lot of things, I mean, Select Board, of course, will always get recorded, but a lot of things start at other boards or get discussed at other boards, and it's so important and so useful to make that connection. You know, COVID was awful, but one thing that it did get municipal government was the recording of all the meetings, and people en masse really saw the value of that. So I think it is appropriate for us to, to respond to that and get everything recorded. So, all right, so I think we are in favor, we don't have to vote on this. This is to ask Tim to, really direct him to go ahead and, and come back to us in the near future with what it'll take to record all in-person meetings.
All right, and then at that point, we create the policy from there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to bring the draft policy with me at that time, so we could just, I get it all on one, or two, or three pieces of paper.
And it's, it's, it's pretty simple, because the committee that is meeting doesn't do the recording in a general sense. This is something, generally it's either a staff member or the cable department, and it's the cable department providing the equipment. Anyone can record a public meeting, so we don't need to direct, say, the appropriations committee to record their meetings, because they're just going to meet the same way they always do. It is then the job of Tim and his staff to go ahead and get it recorded. And, and because appropriations doesn't need to do anything and doesn't need to give any, doesn't even say, okay, do it. Because anyone can show up. You know, any member of the public can come in and record any public meeting. So this is just, we're going to make sure that actually happens.
Now, well, you, you know, there's a lot of committees that have been meeting for a long time without being televised. So to get them to know that that is the way to go and we're going that way.
Yeah.
Who, who knows what that'll take. They're not used to it, but we gotta let them know it's going to happen.
Yeah. Good. Okay. Very good.
Great idea.
Thank you. Um, next up, discussion regarding code red announcement follow-up. So we decided a couple of months ago that we would do a code red announcement in advance of town meeting to get people to town meeting. I was asked to, to use my voice for that, which I did. And I, that was the worst part of it, of course, is everyone saying, Mitch, I heard you on my telephone. You're telling me to go to town meeting. I mean, my perspective is, is the feedback has been really, really positive. We had said we wanted to talk about it afterwards, once we got some feedback. I got one negative email from someone that contacted me that didn't like it, that thought that it should only be used for emergencies. And I know the fire chief, who was the recipient, it looks like it's, the emails, it looks like it gets sent from his address. So he gets the responses. He got one or two. I don't know if you heard anything else.
I haven't got anything. Just the chief's memo.
And, but I heard a lot of positive from that.
Turnout was amazing.
Yes.
Who sent, who sent us the picture of all the people in line at town meeting?
That was posted online.
Yeah. Somebody, somebody posted that on social media. That, that's a, that's an issue.
Photo. I mean, it's an issue that it was, and they can, whatever, work on that. But the, um, the fact that there were that many people trying to, I mean, it just gave, like, in the big auditorium, seeing 300 and what was it, 65 or so people sitting there, it didn't look like as much. But when they were all in a long line in the high school parking lot, that was amazing.
Yeah. So we, we wanted to increase turnout and, and I think this was one piece that did. The signs that went around town, all of the social media, all of everything, some, some of it is certainly just the articles that were on the warrant attract some people. But we maintained, you know, a really solid quorum through three long nights. And so that's really good. So it tells me, I think this worked. I think this did what we wanted it to do.
Well, I think that the really big numbers were only the first two nights. And the third night, we lost like two-thirds of the people. But I, I think it's a good idea to maybe consider doing the zoning articles in the fall. And so town meeting isn't so long, because that is one thing a lot of people have given me an earful about, was three long nights of town meeting. What is that? So I, I mean, I know, um, like I wouldn't be here to, to be on the select board for that. But I do think the, it's really important to, um, understand that three nights is too much for most people, even though you guys love it.
I, I totally agree with that, splitting the two meetings, because there were many people who would have come for the next, but said, children, I can't manage that.
It's a lot to ask.
It's a lot to ask. And, and we want to continue to increase the number of people coming. So that's going to increase the time that people get to speak, which is what we're doing. That's the whole reason that we have town meeting is because it's the only time you're going to get to speak like this. Eventually, we, you know, 20, 30 years from now, we may change that form of government to what other towns are doing or into a county situation. So I think while we have it, we should use it. And I think that, you know, it was great having the, the numbers behind you to know how many people were actually there. I was like, oh, I could turn around, oh, look at that, there's 360, 61, oh, 62.
How many people voted?
Yes. How many voted? It was just, it was, and people were probably there who didn't vote too. So that, that whole, that was wonderful, although I, I would like to make the recommendation that we could have a monitor in front of us. Because this was tough.
Our rubber necks.
Trying to keep my head turned around, just to write down the numbers, because I, I like to see that, you know, the difference. And I try to keep a record of that. But I had people come up to me, you know, people who were like, I didn't want this, but I really liked it. I really changed my mind. So I think that.
About the clickers?
About the clickers. They were there. I didn't get one negative remark from that. And I got several people who did come up to me and say, this is a great idea. And I said, yes, indeed. And I like the lanyards. You didn't have that lanyard. You might have lost that baby. Yeah. So.
So, so Tim asked the board to provide, I think through Angie, any feedback on town meeting from board members. So, you know, I'll relay that to the public, is that if, you know, anyone has any suggestions on how to improve town meetings, send it, you know, to, whether it be to the board or directly to Tim or to the office. As, you know, as, as they get collated and improved. I, I forget who, who mentioned the zoning in the fall. That's something a lot of towns do. We don't have a traditional fall town, a special town meeting. Every, every meeting is either an annual or a special. So a fall would be a special, even if it happened every year. And, but placing the zoning in the fall and having that focused on zoning and having the annual be focused on financial items. You can put anything anywhere. You just need to do the annual budget at the annual town meeting. That's the only real requirement. Makes, I think it makes a lot of sense to simplify the process. Something we can look at, you know, in the coming year. We've, we've dealt with the zoning articles. We will, we know we're going to have a special town meeting for the fire station project in the fall. So that might let us gauge the, the interest in general for, you know, for a fall special town meeting. And then maybe as we then approach next year's annual, consider making that a, a regular feature.
And then we'll have to check too in the dates, because we get so many people that's either on vacation or coming back from vacation or just, you know, every, every day in the book is, you know, can we have a different day? Well, even we do it on the different day, you still can't make it. So it's talked about Saturdays. I mean, there's been a lot of discussion.
October's a good month though, because people don't want to leave New England when the colors are so beautiful. So maybe. Can I just do a shout out to the planning board though, for all those articles? It really struck me because I always think their articles are not as exciting as some of the others. And they know this, so they know, they, whatever. But, um, I thought it was really, it really spoke to me when Amy Pereski was standing up there. And we were discussing, should we keep going or should we not? And someone said, can you just pick out the few important ones and we'll do those? And she said, we worked really hard on these. I think they're all important. And she sounded like, like a little kid in school, so earnest and just honest and genuine. And that made me realize like, this is really important and we did them all and they were all about, you know, equally important. They were all good articles. So shout out to planning board.
I also think part of the attendance, I heard lots of positive feedback about your videos, so thank you for putting those out. People really like them. And I think that people understanding what these articles would mean really gave them a vested interest in showing up. And I thought we got some great comments from the audience. I was so impressed. And I've taken down all those names to reach out to help Lisa recruit them for other boards and committees.
Put them on her, put them on her.
You're on the list.
Volunteer list.
I really appreciate that. And anything we can do to help educate people, it's really hard, because there's no newspapers that are really reporting on the, the inner workings. So thank you for making that a priority. I appreciate it. And many people that I've spoken to did.
And I, I agree with all that. And I think that people need to know what, well, we have the same problem. We get information, we're asked to vote on things that we haven't even been able to delve into. So you go to town meeting and you don't even get involved in government and all of a sudden you're there this night and you're listening to a, a little paragraph. I don't know what I should do. What are you doing? So now that we've taken away the what are you doing, the clickers won't let their seat. I think the, the better the explanation, the more informed decisions people can make. And there's going to be more positive feedback and probably, again, more attendance and more, um, you know, a unified community, which we need to do.
Well, and we, it might increase the number of people who watch either our meetings or finance, financial planning or appropriations too, before town meeting to kind of see how the sausage gets made.
Yes, yes.
All right. So I, am I hearing back to the specific agenda item was unco, was unco, no, sorry. I mean, it's good to have a post-town meeting conversation in general, but does everyone think code red was a success in this regard? And?
Sorry to the three angry people, but you're overruled.
And, and it can be used for rare, occasional, you know, important announcements that are not of emergency nature. And I'll reiterate something we've talked about before is when you sign up for code red, you are automatically opted into emergency alerts. That's sort of checked off and you can't uncheck it. But then there's an option to either be on the general alerts or not get, receive general alerts. And this was a general alert that went out. And there are some people that did not want the general alert, so they were not alerted to town meeting.
I'd like to say that, you know, when it comes time for that fire station to be built, there's going to have to be general information on if the road's going to be closed, if there's certain times when there's more than, not, you know, you might be able to bring it down to one lane, but then there might be a time when there's no lanes, where something's coming in and.
Oh, you mean if Route 20 has to get closed for construction?
Right.
Yeah. I mean, I think that would be an appropriate use of the emergency alert if, if that were, I, my gut feeling is Route 20 would never need to be closed for more than a short period of time for installation of lights, but don't quote me on that.
Yep. I mean, you just, you just don't know. I mean, it's, it takes a second for it to back up.
Yeah.
And then it backs up all the way to a point where you have a whole day of trying to catch up.
Yeah. Police and fire know how to notify people for things like that. I trust them on that. Okay. Good. All right.
Oh, I have, I have one question. So the memo from Chief Parenti says there were 22,544 attempted calls with 5,612 numbers reached. And then it was retried and an additional 361 calls were reached. That's, that's not a, I mean, why, why did we not reach more people?
I don't know what numbers not reached, 6,866. I don't know exactly what that means.
I think it's a physical person answering the phone. Everybody else went to voicemail.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
I'm saying that because it sounds logical, but he should answer that question. I, that's my best guess.
Well, if there's something that we need to update or something like that, then.
No, I mean, people move, right? They'll sign up, they appear and then they move and they don't come out. And then they change providers for their cell phone and the system doesn't update itself. The end user has to go in and log into that system and remove or update themselves. And I think that was some of the feedback that he, that the chief gave to people, you know, log in, get your username and password and update this, this process of how you want to be or not. You want to unsubscribe, just like you would from an email listserv that you don't want to be a part of anymore. You gotta, it's on the, the end user to take it on. We can't just remove people.
But not many people unsubscribed.
I don't know the data on how many you had at any point and how many come off at any given point. He might know that. But I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know that.
Okay.
Can I go back to the cable discussion?
Sure.
We've got the cable advisory committee. Is that still something that people can apply to if they want it to be on that committee?
So that is, it, it is a committee that is in our bylaws, so it exists. They have not met in a very long time. I know we got an email from either, yeah, either a current or former member of the cable committee suggesting some reformation. That's, I think that's, that, you know what, that, that might be a good opportunity to, to maybe take a look at that when, when we talk about recording, maybe talk about at the same meeting, the reformation of the cable committee or some version thereof, if we, you know, wanted to do that. Um, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Good idea. Laura?
And I think to Julian's point where we have removed my name, five of them and stopped six, those could very well be people who have moved, who are not here anymore and didn't even remember that they signed up. So I don't think it, I don't think it should shadow.
Yeah. Yeah. I, my, yeah, that's not, it's such, certainly a very small percentage of the thousands that went out. So I thought that was good. The, the other thing that made me think about is we have in our bylaws that say for a special town meeting, we have to do a mailing to every address in town. So we will have to do that for the fall town meeting. And there's certainly an expense associated with that. I think for next year's annual town meeting, maybe we think about using this instead. Using code red instead of the mailing to pull that off and saving the cost and effort for a full town mailing for, for specials.
Could the tax bill be used?
I don't think so. I think we use a service provider for the tax bill. And it might, the timing might not align with when the special town meeting warrant is ready and everything else.
That might be an option too, because figuring out a way of, of crossing.
Yeah, it's.
If it's the mailing.
Having, having thought about that before, it's complicated that the, the tax bills get generated off of the system. I don't even know if they get printed in this building. A lot of towns use service providers for that. They're used to, you know, having a machine that folds, you know, a single eight and a half and a lay 11 piece of paper. All of a sudden, we're sticking a warrant in there too, and that's a.
Well, not the warrant, but, but a letter saying that.
Or a letter.
Yeah. Because I've seen them, actually. I've seen that put in, in a different color or something like that.
If the timing, if the timing works out, we can do that with the fall time meeting.
Do you have to do that for, for this, for the annual?
Our bylaws say that we have to, I forget the exact language of it, but we have to send a mailing to every address in town.
And does it have to be within a certain period of time of the meeting? Two weeks before the meeting or month before the meeting?
It would have to be, I don't, I don't remember, but it would certainly have to be after the warrant was set. And the warrant is typically set.
The end of April.
Three or four weeks before a town meeting.
Okay. Cause you could do that, you could do the, the second quarter. Tax bill, because we have to pay it by May 1st, but you have it by April 1st.
So the, you're thinking about the annual. The annual, we don't, we don't do a mailing. We don't have to. Because the annual, my suspicion is, the rationale is fourth Monday of April is town meeting. That's in our bylaw. In theory, everybody knows that. But special town meetings can be called by us anytime. So, so this is, we have to make sure the public knows. And when the bylaws were put together, there was no internet or, or code red or anything like that. So that was the way to notify the town. So for the fall special town meeting, we will have to do a mailing.
Right. And, or even the water bill. I mean, there's two bills that go to people on a regular basis.
Well, not everyone gets a water bill.
All right. There's people with wells.
Lots of people. Yeah. So.
But they get a tax bill.
Not everybody gets a tax bill. Plenty of renters.
Really? Well.
There's no way around the letter.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't, I, yeah. I think, I think we're going to have to send, send that letter for the fall time meeting. Yeah. Between, between the timing and having no other envelope that goes to everybody. I think we're going to have to do it. But again, my hope is, is we can think about. Yeah, I could.
What is it?
Postcard?
Post.
Depends with the mailing, whatever the past practice has been, you probably just want to stay consistent with that.
Yeah.
I mean, most of the bills that I've seen for water source or for tax, there's a little window where you can insert a date, a time, or some other message, but not a whole letter to go out with that. So you could, we can always add things to those bills, a little blurred, but nothing big.
Right.
But if we have to do a postcard, it'd be cheaper.
Yeah.
But you want them to find it and see it.
Put it on the refrigerator.
It'll be a magnet.
That's right. We have library magnets that they can put on the refrigerator with.
All right. We, we, we'll, we will have to figure that out before the fall town meeting and then figure out maybe how to never do it again, by using code red instead. Okay. Any other code red comments? All right. Moving along, reports. Uh, let's see. How about we go in order of this way? Or do you, unless you, would you like to go?
I would like to go last.
Okay.
You want to go last, huh?
That was my, that was my assumption. Okay, Lisa.
Oh dear. This is hard in person, because I don't write, I don't get a time to write everything down like I do at my other location. All right. So I think Mitch and I had attended the doors, um, what would you call it? The doors open house?
Yeah. It was the go outdoors opening from the cultural council.
So, and that, there are less doors this year. They, they were having a little difficulty getting, I guess, artists for that. But, um, but they are there and hopefully they'll be also at the common as well, like they did the last time.
That event isn't taking place this year. That was their culture fest.
Yes. Oh, it's not going to take place.
It's not taking place this year.
This is a great camera angle. Look at this. You don't even see me. You don't even see me. Okay, well, that's... They're doing some other things culturally. The Northborough Arts Council had their first fundraiser, and it was held on Saturday night of that same day. And they had a lovely event at the Goodwin Farm, which is on 135. So, I don't know if it's a new build. It looks pretty new that the barn was built next to the antique farmhouse. And they had, you know, maybe 30 works of art that different artists had donated. And it was good attendance. The food was amazing. Leslie Shore was the lady in charge of all the advertising and the foods, and they did get a lot of donations. And she cooked up some lovely food as well and passed it around. And it was a good success for them, and they're going to be doing more of that, which is great, because again, it's a cultural event that people are starting to become more involved. And so, I'd like to... I'd love to see more of that happening. I think the plan that they have with painting the electric boxes, and I think that's already gone through, I'm not sure, the okay from the electric company. Do you know, Julianne? Anything about the boxes and how that...
So, they're looking into that because there's two different ways to do it, and it costs money, so...
Right, well, that's... And that's one of the reasons why they do the fundraising. But you could hand paint it, or you could do a wrap on them, and I think that's one of the things they're thinking of. I talked with Suzanne Cox, and we were talking about using the statues at the White Cliffs as a... Paint statues, pass them around, get that as a fundraiser, or dress them up, one or the other. Do something with these statues that they should probably have been dressed for the winter. It's a little cold to be like that in wintertime. But to be able to do something with them, and again, bring something back to the town and have an event that people enjoy. Let's see, what do I have? So, that was, I think, my only social stuff going on. I did want to ask the question... Another email came in, and it talked about a sewer line from the discussion that was at the town meeting, and that we're looking into building the sewer line to Route 9. And I wanted to get more information on that and find out even the step-by-step process of that or how that begins. And I know that the planner is looking to get a grant, is writing a grant for that. I do know that there's a couple of people, or a couple of developers, that are interested in building. And in normal times, it's usually the developer that takes care of that. So, I wanted to look more into that whole process, because we really do need to find ways to save money in our tax dollars, especially with the next big thing coming up with the fire station, so that we might need to find better ways to spend the taxpayers' dollars to put something like that in. Should probably be on the shoulders of somebody else who could afford it better. So, I did want to get some information on that, how that whole thing started, and what, you know, what the plan is. Like, I'm sure that it's probably economic development driving it, but again, you have to look at the checks and balances of how you can do it most cost-effectively for the taxpayer. So, I would, as I say, I want to get some information on that. Let's see.
I would also like that, please.
Yeah. I think it may make sense for Laurie to come into one of our meetings, maybe whatever meeting that she has already scheduled for. This is a multi-year proposal, I imagine, for extending the sewer line. Whenever she's before us anyway, have an agenda item where she can walk us through her thoughts on that and how she, you know, schedule, how she anticipates funding it and everything else.
Right. Right, or even more, even before anything really gets into a big start about it, because I thought, and I may be wrong, I know that Fire Chief came to us for the eight people to get the grant, to apply for that grant. Are there just certain grants that staff comes to tell us about? I don't know. I mean...
There are a lot of grants that we never hear anything about.
That we don't hear anything about?
Yeah, I mean, there's... When you say taxpayer dollars, are you referring to the state of Massachusetts? Because that's what this grant... It used to be Mass Works. I don't know what they call it now, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I think it's Mass Works.
Mass Works would be the application. The design work would be done by the owner of the building, and that's what would be submitted. So, there wouldn't be taxpayer dollars, other than the legwork to get the application in to get the Mass Works grant to do the sewer line.
Does the grant cover everything? Or is it a portion of it?
You ask for it 100% to be covered. The developer or owner has to come up with something. They're paying to do all the design work ahead of time. So, I can get you the exact status, you know, when the application's going to go, who's going to apply, but we can do that.
All right, yeah. I think it's a good idea, because, I mean, some of the things, too, is that we're more interested, more than knowing what's going on and who's interested in building and what have you. And I think that in the past, you know, a lot of it's kind of been, you know, on a need-to-know basis. And I think that... I think I'd like to have a little bit more need to know of what the different things are in the plan. So, that was one of the things that I really wanted to get some information on. And I have talked about this before, about the reconsideration of Blake Street and that 250, because of what's happening now with 4 West Main Street or not happening with 4 M S Main Street, or what are we doing with the parking lot? How will that be affected by the sale of 4 West Main Street? Does the land from the parking lot go with the sale of the building? And if that's the case, then we lose any public parking we might have any handle on. So, there's a lot of information there before we can start running down that street and decide what we want to do with it. So, until such time as we have talked about it and ironed out some of that, and I think that's kind of a step-by-step, right? We have to decide where the town offices are going to be before anything else can happen, because you can't sell the building without deciding where the offices are going to be, and so on and so on. So, to go and start something now with hiring somebody to do, you know, an engineering thing that may not be used, I think we really need to talk about it, so...
Is that the end of your report?
That will be the end of my report.
Okay. Julianne?
Well, I just want to say a brief thank you to the Cultural Council for the outdoor exhibit and to all the people who attended town meeting. And then, I'm so sad to say that, Kristin, this is probably your last meeting, unless we can think of something to meet now.
On Monday.
In a week and a half. And I'm, you know, I'm not a good speaker off the cuff, so I did... I have to read my script, but I wanted to say, there are many things that I'm going to miss about working with you, but the most important one is the honest and frank way that you analyzed decisions that we, as a board, had to make. Oftentimes, you made observations that were different from mine, and I thought, in the end, it was so helpful as we came to a group decision. But not only are you honest with your deliberations, you're honest about yourself, and we have all come to love lazy Kristin, who became something like a sixth imaginary person on the board. I loved your literary contributions, the poems and the quotations, and of course, who could not love Kitty? Meeting from home always had its tricky moments, and Kitty reminded us of that when she made her appearances. And what I remember, though, about the cat appearance is that she never appeared after 10:00 PM, which probably should have alerted us to a meeting going on too long. So, I can't pick up the mantle and offer quotes at every meeting, but I will offer you this one by Garrison Keillor on saying goodbye. Be well, do good work, and keep in touch.
Of course. Thank you.
Laura?
Thank you. I was just trying to look up an article, but I saw in the patch that Northborough got, I think, $400,000 or $500,000 in infrastructure funding from the governor's office, so I was really... Did I misread that?
I don't remember seeing that. I'm not saying you misread it.
Do you remember reading anything about that? There was all the towns in Massachusetts got money towards infrastructure.
Oh, you know what? I think that was just the, um...
Chapter 90.
Chapter 90.
Oh.
The extra Chapter 90 funds.
Okay.
But that sounds high. I hope it's that number.
It looked good. It looked good compared to the other towns. I was excited to see that. I really enjoyed town meeting this year, thanks to everyone that attended, participated, and made that such a great event. I didn't make the open outdoors event, but I did stop by to see the beautiful artwork, so thank you to everyone that made that possible. I wanted to remind everyone that the Senior Center has delicious lunches Monday through Thursday. It's really affordable. They've got all sorts of options, and the food is delicious, and you've always got somebody friendly to sit down with. I did participate in Town Cleanup, which was a really great event that was hosted by the Northborough Community Affairs Committee. I was going to also bring up in new business, and I don't know if that's the right place, but I would like to have a future discussion on possibly eliminating the sale of nips in Northborough, because there was an obscene number of little alcohol bottles, and it was concerning to me that there was a lot of them. So, I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. I wanted to remind everyone that early voting is going to be available from May 6 through May 10 at Town Hall. You can attend Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from 8 to 4, Tuesday from 8 to 7, and Friday from 7 to 12 at 63 Main Street. Otherwise, we'll see you at Melican next week for voting on the 14th. And then, my last question I was going to ask is I was driving over by Assabette Park, and it looks like there was a lot of trees cleared there, and I wasn't sure what that was for, so if I could just get some clarification on that. And that concludes my reports. Thank you.
Do you want to go before me or after me?
Oh, my gosh, and Kristin.
Yeah.
I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
We're going to be saying some things about Kristin, so...
Thank you so much for bringing so much kindness to the board. I remember the day that you won your election. I loved that moment. I was so excited when you called me and we... I've loved every discussion that we've had, and I appreciate how you've always reached out to make sure that I knew what was coming up, how I could participate, and just made sure that I was comfortable. And it made my joining the board much easier, and I just thank you so much for always bringing kindness, inclusivity, and making sure that our town is as welcoming as it can be. And I'm going to miss having you to deliberate with and discuss and all that you've brought to the board, and I also wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Do you want me to go, and then you go?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. So, I'll repeat a couple of things that others have said, but they're important. Vote early. So, you can actually vote starting a few hours ago. And I'm really encouraging, and I think we should all encourage, early voting, particularly this year for this election, because Melican Middle School is in session on Election Day next Tuesday. We've all been there on Election Day, and it's a little chaotic. Melican is a little chaotic anyway, as certainly you know. And add in voting, it gets really, really chaotic. The more people that vote early, and they do so in this room, pretty much every time Town Hall is open this week. You went through the hours, so I won't repeat them. And I really encourage everyone to do that. That will, knowing how many people are willing to vote early, will also help our future discussions about voting location, which we committed to having sometime after the presidential election this fall. Follow-up on what we talked about a meeting or two ago about having a student representative to the Select Board. I've had some really good discussions with the guidance office and the principal and the superintendent and the school department, and it looks like they will find somebody in the fall that they want to associate with the school year, so hopefully in September, they'll find somebody to join us on a regular basis at our meetings. I want to congratulate whoever it is that won over $5 million with a lottery ticket at Lowe's Meat Market. And mention that we have a beautiful mansion on a hill right down the street. That would be... I think we'd probably give it to somebody as long as they promise to clean it up and open the doors every once in a while to some parties. But, and congratulations to Lowe's Meat Market, because I think that they get a nice little bonus out of that process, too. I also want to mention the Go Outdoors event that was a week ago Saturday. That's a lot of fun. It was hard this year, because Craig Cox played such an important role in making that happen every single year, and obviously, he wasn't there this year, because we lost him a few months ago. But it was a really nice event, and everyone should go to Ellsworth McAfee around the back end of the track and walk by the beautiful artwork that's there this year. And on a couple of... Make sure you look at the back, because there's some art on the back of two or three of the Doors also. Town Cleanup was great, as always. Last night... Yesterday afternoon, I attended the annual concert by the Northborough Area Community Concert, Community Chorus, that included the musical Includes Group. It was a beautiful concert with, I'd say, about 300 people in attendance at the El Gonquin Auditorium. That was a lot of fun. I saw Northborough Cable there, so hopefully it was recorded and will show up on YouTube. In a couple of days, this Wednesday, I'm going to a municipal government cybersecurity event in Worcester, and I know our Towns IT staff is going also, and that should be pretty interesting, that I imagine I'll bring something back to the board. And we'll hopefully want to have a conversation with our Towns IT staff as to ways of confirming or updating infrastructure for cybersecurity in the town. And of course, this is Kristin's last meeting, and I am very sad about that. And, oh, look, there's something here.
Oh, huh.
That we would love to share with you, and this is the same plaque that we gave everyone at Town Meeting that is retiring or leaving their boards, but in a somewhat nicer frame, as it is well deserved.
Well, thank you. That's really nice. Yeah, I signed my own.
Yes. I noticed that, too. You just...
No, she intended my own. No, I did it on purpose. Yeah, I tried to die. I signed my own, and she's like, oh, sure, go for it. Yeah, so...
So, Kristin and I have enjoyed so much getting to know you in your time on the board, and especially in the last couple of years that we've been on the board together. And you are probably the single best communicator of anyone that I've ever served with in municipal government. And you've taught me and all of us so much about ways of looking at things and ways of really hearing people and ways of speaking back to people in caring and effective ways. So, I thank you very, very much for that, and we will miss you.
Thank you.
With that, that ends my report.
That's like the nicest thing you could ever say to a former speech pathologist, that I'm a good communicator. But thank you, yeah. That's kind of what I set out to do. So, I also wrote a script, because I figured I would need it. But I wrote a script for every report, so that wasn't unusual for me. Tonight, I'll begin my report with a quote instead of saving it for the end. There's this Taylor Swift song called "Nothing New," and she sings, "They tell you while you're young, girls go out and have your fun, and they hunt and slay the ones who actually do it. Criticize the way you fly when you're soaring through the sky," and she goes on. And I bring this up because being an international superstar pop icon and being on the Northborough Select Board are actually really similar. No, really, but those lines rang true for me when I was in my first year. I felt watched and judged about everything I said. And you know what, though? I said all the things I believed I should say anyway.
I might have changed how I said them so that I was always, or hopefully always polite and not sounding judgy myself, but I spoke up when I thought things weren't right or fair, and I'm glad I did. People say that being on a Select Board is a thankless task. I can't tell you how many people said that to me in the last three years. I did not find that to be the case, though. People thanked me all the time, especially people who watched the occasional meeting here or there. And also, people that I just knew from the community. I've lived here for 20 years. And I was just, I just made a little note tonight how nice it is that I got to see Mrs. Griffin's husband appointed to Lieutenant tonight. And I got to be on the interview committee for that, too. But really, in the Griffin family, and there are a big Griffin family, as you saw, and there are, two of them are very high up in the police department here in Northborough. But Mrs. Griffin, Colleen Griffin, Bill's wife, was the most famous Griffin in our family because she taught all four, all three of my kids 4th grade. And so not very many of my kids all had the same teacher for any one grade. Did I say that right? No, not very many teachers, all three of them shared, just two, and Colleen Griffin was one of them, so. She said some nice things to me when her brother-in-law was appointed to Police Chief, and that was another night when people were like, oh, you know, thank you for doing this. Thank you for all the time you put in. And I did appreciate that and it's warranted, too. So to those people who do pay attention to some of the hundreds of meetings during the year of meetings before Town Meeting, please know that if you speak up to the Select Board, the Planning Board, or the School Committee, we are all the better for it. Here are a few tips for speaking up wisely. Do your research. Find out if your issue has been discussed before. If you can't do this for some reason, then approach your issue with tact and questions rather than demands and insinuations. Complaints are okay if that's all you have, but helpful suggestions are very welcome. If you feel like no one is listening to you, apply to join a Board or Committee that deals with your issue or is at least tangential to your issue. Volunteers are always welcome. If you feel empowered by your own ideas and you have supportive friends and neighbors, run for office. Because if I can do it, you can do it. The very, really, the very first thing I wrote in my very first Select Board notebook on the first page before my first meeting was, quote, "Don't forget, pack it in inbox." Thank you to all the members of the Boards, Committees, and Commissions I've worked with or haven't actually worked with, but who work hard for Northborough. The current Select Board is a good group of very dedicated people who do not always agree with each other. This lack of being in lockstep is a good thing for the town. Everyone has boundaries and we need to respect them, but the fact that this Board now has friendly relationships with department heads is a good thing, too. It's my first, my very first in-person Select Board meeting tonight, and it's my last meeting. That's what happens when you get elected during a pandemic. Thank you for putting up with me and my alter ego, lazy Kristen. We will now retire to the Cheese Lounge and the Bon Bons. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Any reports from this end of the table, Tim or Diane?
I just wanted to wish Kristen and her family best wishes for your next endeavor. Thank you for everything.
Thanks, Di.
I love your house. And I really appreciate you gave me the opportunity to serve, so thank you for that.
You're welcome. You're doing great. I'm so proud.
I only have six things.
Okay.
First one that Diane put on my list is about ICMA and being credentialed, doesn't credential manager, so I'm back to that status.
Great.
So it'll be a press release to that effect. I didn't want to start with that after that, but she put it at my list, I wanted to do that. Under municipal electric aggregation, the Town's plan was submitted on the 23rd to the DPU. There is no timetable set, but we estimate it'll be about six months before we can get in front of DPU to have our meeting with them so we can move forward with that energy aggregation. You talked a lot about Town Meeting. We did have department head meetings with follow-up and we also compiling information to make the process better, to be more inclusive. We talked about everything from interpreters, translation of language on the website, to having somebody stand up for deaf folks that might be in the audience. Certainly, I couldn't hear, and I don't know if it's just because I'm getting older, but I couldn't hear sitting at that desk table that we're at. So having some speakers back at us and having some visual equipment that we can see so we don't turn around. So those are all things we kind of thought about going in. That's too big to put there, so we need something that's going to modify us. But your cable staff's dedicated and professional, so we're going to move forward with taking everybody's comments and including the public's to make it better. So we'll look forward to implement that as we go. We're also working on next steps for every article, the 63 that were passed and or modified to get all those things done. So for HR, particular Health and Human Services with that position, where we formed the committee, we have three staff people, one from the Board of Health and one from the Youth and Family Services Committee to sit on that screening committee. I think we have nine really strong applicants right now, obviously an internal candidate as well, but they'll sift through and they'll move them up to me to be interviewed and then I'll bring back the formal recommendation to the Board for affirmation, just like we did with Lieutenant tonight. While that's not a requirement of the Charter, I do think it's important that department heads are seen at a Board meeting, affirmed by the Board, so I want that to happen. I cannot give you a timeline because I have to go through the process, so don't hold me to a timeline, but sooner the better. Peaslee School Building Committee, I hope that by the 20th I'll have all of the interviews wrapped up and have a firm commitment from the Recreation Commission for their selection, School Committee for their selection, and all the other groups and the residential. We did a posting on the website, social media, an email blast, and then a secondary email blast to the Recreation Group that Ally Lane has. So we're trying to get the word out there and try to get participation onto that committee. And you'll have to round out the committee with whoever you select on the 20th as well. Procurement information, this is something that came up a couple of times as I walked in the door here. You know, we do procurement, we want people to know about it, so there is a section on the website that'll deal with that, whether we post it on Conbuys or the Central Register or in a newspaper, wherever that document lives, it'll, the link will live on the website. So there hasn't been anything posted there since September, so we'll make sure we do that so people can see those postings. Yes?
Can you tell me where on the website that'll be posted? Is it like a RFP tab?
There's a, on the left-hand side, I think under the Town Administrator, there's a Procurement's tab.
Okay. Perfect.
And then the Police Department exterior is one item that I could have moved up top, but we did request quotes for services from four architects. It might have been five, I think it was four. So we are looking to sign a contract, but also come back to the Board with that architect to talk about scope because people had different opinions on what we should do. There's going to be some exploratory work that has to be done at the building ahead of that so we can get the right scope, but we'll certainly bring that scope back with that architect for the Board to have that discussion if you wish. So that's underway as we go. Goal-setting workshop, trying to arrange something for the week of the 24th, so goal-setting something that was left behind with Michael and maybe even Mr. Reed. And then the Board's reminded me of it a couple of times throughout the past couple of months, so we're looking to coordinate in June for that to happen. So right now, I think we're landing on the 26th of June, but if people haven't gotten back to Angie on logistics in terms of time and date, please do that. We appreciate that. And looking ahead to May 20, I already said this, but I'll say it again, we plan to have the lease for Full West Main and the PNS for 13 Church Street. And we are working on an RFP for Full West Main to fully lease out that space. If we were to do a long-term lease and or to sell it, we need Town Meeting approval, so I don't think selling it is in our best interest, that would be my recommendation to the community, but it's the community's decision at the end of the day. And we are still working on the RFP for parking. And then we are moving forward with RTE for the LED streetlights. RTE is Real Tech Energy. They're the group who submitted the original proposal to us, so we are moving forward with them with that. The final piece, when we talked to Appropriations Committee and Financial Planning Committee, we talked about starting early for a budget process, and I know we want to bask in the sunshine of our success, but we really can't, right? We have to engage the community through summit processes, through talking about operational needs and growth and what the burn rate is of that levy, so we know what we're up against and how much we can really spend on an annual basis. So I've asked the Committee, both Appropriations Committee and Financial Planning, to think of financial summits where we could just, you know, look at the trend, the financial trend monitoring system, but more importantly, kind of agree on some of the assumptions and decide what we think is important as a community. So it's Select Board, School Committee, Financial Planning, Appropriations Committee, all those folks in one room. I know it's a lot of people, but we've got to take the time to do that over July and August so we can be hitting the ground running to develop a budget in September and October that we can all understand every line item and know where you spend your money. But we need to have those summits ahead of that build. So that's something that you can look forward to an email to try to coordinate that. We're trying to coordinate with the two committees first and then we'll come back to the Board to make sure we can all get on the same page with that. And that concludes my report.
Thanks, Tim.
Can I ask?
Yeah, of course.
A question? So I'm one of the delinquent people who hasn't submitted my time availability for the goal-setting. And it's mostly because I'm not really clear about what the expectations are from Mr. Nutting. What, like, could you just walk us through how this will?
What'll happen is he will send a letter to the Board members with questions. And from those questions, he'll be able to compile them, not assign questions to individual Board members, but that'll become the agenda of what you want to discuss and get out of that meeting. So setting the logistics is really embryonic to the bigger picture. But we, I mean, you went through this before I got here in terms of setting a time and setting aside funds, so the membership might be better explaining what you want to get out of it, but he's going to facilitate the discussion relative to what the Board wants to achieve over the next three to five years.
And what, you know, what exactly is his expertise that he will be able to impart some knowledge to us? Is he familiar with our Charter and, or is he like a municipal?
He's been a manager for 30 years. I mean, you know, like a town manager, I forget which communities, but he has a lot of municipal experience from developing and writing charters for those particular communities. And then whatever other, I mean, I'm starting with Jeff because I know him from North Reading, I think, but way, way back. And then I only assumed that this group has kind of vetted him as the guy they want to see overseeing this process.
We voted last summer.
Mike Gallagher suggested him, though.
Right.
We didn't have a selection to pick from.
Yeah.
Mike seemed pretty sure that he was a good choice.
It was just, he's, you know, he was recommended and that, and we didn't really discuss other options. I'm sure he's fine, but I was just, I just want to make sure that it's a very, you know, kind of free-flowing that we can really discuss what we want to accomplish and not have it so scripted that, you know, that we might not get anything really good.
It's your meeting. I mean, you're going to control what you discuss and what topics you cover.
Okay.
And that's what some of the questions that he sends out ahead of time, that he compiles, gets to. So it'll be like, you know, the first question, what do you, what do you think your greatest role is as a Select Board member? And each one of you have your own opinion on that. What do you think the goals should be for the next year? And you'll write down those and then you'll have discussion about those particular items.
Okay.
So what'll drive it is the questionnaire that he'll send to you individually, then he'll compile and then he'll be able to moderate and go through all of those questions. And, you know, there'll be open-ended stuff, too, that you can say, you know, we never develop policies or we shouldn't develop, whatever it is. So I think it will be free-flowing.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I think it'll be in a, probably not in this room, it'll be off-site. If I can find you a place where we can feed you as well, we would like to do that. Because you're going to be there for three and a half hours, so food would be good.
I still had hoped that we would have had at least one meeting first again to go over what we started to do the last time, to have a better outline to work with him and not just go there and then reiterate what we thought we were doing before. So I would like to have that meeting first before we have the meeting with him. So if we could set that up, I think that would be better for us.
I mean, I don't mind doing that if that's what the Board wants to do. I think that a meeting with someone like Jeff might help us have that second meeting more effectively. I think he can give us some good tools as to how to do that. And it sounds like he'll be asking us some questions, so I think some of it will even take place there.
Well, I still think that, I mean, we went through, we went through all those big boards, written throughout all of those, we've created some things that I think we already know that there are things that we want to do.
It's fine if, well, I'm looking to you like, you have no say in this, unfortunately.
I'll be eating Bon Bons. Don't worry about me.
Why don't we, why don't we have a, so we're talking about June 26th?
Yeah, that's a date which trying to land on now.
So we'll have a, we'll have a meeting in two weeks from tonight with a new member and maybe we talk about it then and then try to schedule a date between then, we'll have a little bit more than a month to find an evening to go through and do a second round of reviewing goals and ideas and things like that in advance of that. And then we can ask, you know, get Jeff the output of that and he can watch the meeting if he wants to.
All right, because I think, I think we're, you know, we've, there's some seasoned people, the two of you are seasoned. And I think that some of it, I'm a little concerned because sometimes it's like one-on-one stuff. If you've done one-on-one a few times, it's one-on-one. It's like you don't really get that much more information except the little outline of questions. So I think if we have a better idea of what it is that we're, and I think we do, I think we, you know, we started with that.
We have, I mean, we have a very long list of things we would all like to do.
Right. And better to hone that down before we go into the next meeting.
We can try.
Right, because I think that, you know, it makes more sense. So if we, are we, we're not scheduled right now, is he got not, is July, I mean, what's the?
I think, I think it's a good idea to get something on the books and if we're all available on June 26th, and I know you've already been communicating with Mike, the presumed replacement for Kristen, not that anyone can replace you, that if that date works, I think we should hold to it and just force ourselves to have, to insert another meeting for ourselves between our next meeting and the end of June.
All right.
Which I think we could do.
We should definitely do that. Now, we're going to do the same thing like the retreat that we did the last time with Mike?
This has to be a public meeting, right?
Yep, yep. It's a workshop. It's pretty formal to call it a retreat. Can I just add, I just want to, because I wasn't here during your last discussion, it would be helpful to, you know, to have a moderated discussion. Maybe the questionnaire, you know, while it's developed around a specific date, we can extract that stuff out and get you the questions ahead of time because maybe that'll shed light on, you know, if they're good questions and they're probing and we can have an open discussion. You might want to have a meeting in between, but maybe you won't once you get the questions. So maybe I get the questions out ahead of that, but it would be, I think it would be good for me to be a part of the moderated piece.
Yes.
Because I won't be able to, I have no history of what you did in the past, so.
Right, and we can probably send you the stuff we do.
Oh, I have your file.
So Mondays are generally easier for me, like my work schedule is a little bit hairy towards the middle of the week, so I don't know if, like, if we could do Monday, that would definitely be easier for me just from a work perspective, but if Wednesday's the only option, then I'll do my best to keep my schedule clear.
Well, I just picked the week, I didn't pick the day. It was whatever people can do, so.
Because I think Angie had sent the note and said, you want Monday or Wednesday? And I said, the Monday would be easier. And I just thought you said the 26th, which is the Wednesday.
Well, that, because I think that's what she just relayed to me via text, so it's still to be sorted out. But if you, if you have a date that only works for you, you should just tell us that.
I did, I did.
We'll try to figure it out. I'll get with her.
Anyway, thank you.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you. Anything else here? We have a cemetery deed. Why are cemetery deeds after reports? Is that just a tradition?
When we update, when we update the Charter and the Bylaws, we can update that.
Yeah, we can change that.
Yeah, to me, it's, it's funny.
It's usually the easiest.
Yeah, yeah. That's my thing. We have a cemetery deed. Would someone like to make a motion on a cemetery deed?
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board vote to execute Cemetery Deed 1187.
Second.
Motion made by Julianne, seconded by Laura. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say.
Hi.
Hi. We have, is there any other business before us tonight? Public comments, is there anyone in our audience? Electronic, oh, we have, we have an electronic hand, oh, hold on, I can't do it on my computer. All right, Scott Rogers, I am bringing you in. Sorry, this is my first time using this particular system. Scott, if you could unmute, identify your Scott, if you could unmute, identify yourself and let us know what's on your mind, please. Hold on, we can barely hear you, we've got to figure out the volume.
How many remotes can we have?
Yeah.
It's like a hundred, two, three.
Scott, you still there?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Not quite, Scott, one sec.
Oh, that's a touchscreen, I didn't know that. Okay, try, try again, Scott?
One more time, how's the volume now?
Yes, now we hear you.
Excellent. Sorry about that. Scott Rogers, 26 Tomahawk Drive. Just looking to get information on what the plans are for evaluating the ARPA funding candidates and getting the list that you mentioned published.
Sure. I'm happy to send it to you, the board has it. I am certain that'll be something we'll discuss sort of, you know, after we reorganize after the election, one of our first couple of meetings, we, we know we have to talk about ARPA so that we find the best use of the funds and can get them all committed and don't send any money back to the federal government at the end of the process.
Okay, great, look forward to that.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, Scott. Are there any other members of either the in-person or electronic audience that has anything to offer? Okay, thank you. With that, I'm looking at our big audience. I don't know. Kristen, would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Kristen, seconded by Laura to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned 9:14 PM. Thank you very much, everyone, have a great night.